Good evening, council and staff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think looking at the list, we are missing council member Tiedemann. We will give him a moment. Welcome all to this special meeting of the Albany City Council. I will call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM on February 7th, 2022. I don't see any attendees, but for the purpose of the recording, I will state that the council will consider two matters in closed session tonight. The first regards labor negotiations with the Service Employees International Union, representing some of Albany's staff. Second regards potential litigation concerning the method Albany uses to elect its city council. And again, not seeing any attendees, we will go to closed session.
Mayor, do you still want me to call, or?
That probably is a good idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Gary?
Here.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Here.
Councilmember Nathan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan?
Here. Well, thanks to the city clerk for keeping me on the beam. All right. See you all in closed session.[173.87]
It being seven o'clock. And we'll call this meeting to order for the City Council for February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. In service, Councilmember McQuaid, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated villages of LaShawn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Alori tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now makes us their home.
Thank you, Councilmember McQuaid. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gary?
Here.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Here.
Councilmember Nathan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan.
Here. This is on to report on action taken in the special meeting closed session prior to this regular meeting, and there is no action or report on either of the two items. Moving on to ceremonial matters, item four dash one, which is a proclamation regarding Black History Month. Councilmember Gary, would you please read the proclamation presented to Anthony Freeman, Principal of Freeman Insurance Services, which is located in the office building directly across San Pablo Avenue from Sprouts?
Thank you so much, Mayor. City of Albany proclamation, Black History Month, February twenty twenty-two. It is vital we recognize and celebrate the different races, nationalities, and backgrounds that have shaped our city. Like all cities in the state and nation, African-Americans are built with a unique strength and resilience rooted in their struggles against slavery, many forms of oppression, deep-rooted adversity, and violent opposition to their demands for equality and change. And their contributions and achievements are respected and greatly valued in the City of Albany. Whereas the month of February is designated Black History Month to remember and reflect on tribulations faced by the African-American community and to learn from their vibrant culture and history and to celebrate their many invaluable contributions. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of nineteen twenty-six of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas this celebration acknowledges the importance, though often untold stories and achievements of African-Americans have played in our history, identity, culture, economy, literature, inventions, sports, science, medicine, and politics. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideas. And whereas the history and contributions of African-American citizens are constantly overlooked, misinterpreted, and undervalued in the curriculum of public education institutions prior to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. And whereas Black History Month reminds us that African-Americans struggled for equal opportunity and against discrimination begins hundreds of years ago and have yet have not yet ended. And whereas the Black History Month twenty twenty-two theme Black Health and Wellness regards how black people have built systems across the United States to support their physical health and mental well-being, while each has been systematically degraded by the dominant society. And whereas access to residences is fundamental to health and well-being. And whereas restrictive deeds and discriminatory lending and real estate practices prevented black families from moving into areas and economy, economic equalities continue to make it difficult for many African-American families to afford to live in neighborhoods with highly successful schools. And whereas this history is not remote from Albany but central to it. And while nearby cities have redlined neighborhoods that were virtually the only locations where black families could have homes, Albany had no such areas, as shown in attachment one, resulting in Albany's populace having a much lower share of African-Americans in the present than nearby cities that were redlined, three point five percent black alone according to twenty twenty-sixes, compared to the seven point nine percent in Berkeley, seven point nine percent in Emeryville, and twenty-one point three percent in Oakland. And whereas the systematic exclusion of African-Americans from Albany via redlining was continued on the University of California's land subsequently occupied by University Village in history explained in the article written on November twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, when World War Two brought blacks to East Bay whites fought for segregation. And the quotes and summaries as follows, the areas of residence in a university village was previously part of the larger nineteen hundred residents, Corninas Village, built by the federal government in World War Two to provide homes for shipyard works and their families that area to the that came to the area. And whereas federal government built Corninas Village even when the Albany City Council warned of an undesirable element, i.e. blacks, that would bring integration to the city schools and many Albany like make Albany like South Berkeley. And the Cornias Village through the efforts of its residents and managers went on to become racially integrated, leading and administrator to state racial tensions disappeared as residents, especially women, share commonalities such as child rearing. And the Cornias Village was therefore one of many examples of the more perfect union our area and country could have had. By nineteen fifty-four, nine of ten residents of the Cornias Village were black as there were relatively few other options for black families nearby and that the National Association of Real Estate Board succeeded in gutting the pro-housing movement by planting it a dangerous lesson. The University of California chose to abstain from the housing battle and local governments worked to shut down the village. The federal government closed the project and evicted the residents by nineteen fifty-six. And whereas the University of California stated it would not get involved in the housing business, but after the Cornias Village buildings on its lands were vacated, chose to do just that by providing them to students of University Village. And whereas Albany's present cannot be understood without understanding its history of housing discrimination. And whereas the Albany City Council and the residents of Albany continually have the opportunity to make Albany accessible to and welcoming of African-Americans. Now therefore, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month in the City of Albany. And the City Council acknowledged the contributions of African-Americans in our community and recognized that it's and the Albany's journeys to a fully inclusive city and society is not over but rather requires continual attention and support.
And welcome, Mr. Freeman. We cannot physically provide you the proclamation. I apologize. We're still in that reality, but I am grateful that you are here to receive it. In spirit, if not in fact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Anthony.
Hey, Peggy.
Good to see you.
You too. Oh, hi, Councilman McQuaid. Member McQuaid, I'm sorry.
We're Peggy and Anthony.
Well, I guess with with no further ceremony, we move on, but I do appreciate you being here and choosing Albany to have your business in.
I'm not sure, should I tie in? I've been in Albany since nineteen sixty-eight, my family. And when we first moved in, we actually had to fight some of the redlining, a lot of the redlining ourselves. My cousins first moved to Portland Avenue in Santa Fe. And then my family followed from Camellia in Berkeley and moved to Currys in Thousand Oaks. And my brother and sister went through a lot of troubles going through the high school and going through the schools, but I started a lot younger. So they fought my battles. And by the time I came through, it was a difference based upon my growing up. And I was a star athlete, so that kind of helped and a really good student, a decent student, so that all helped a lot. Albany gave me a lot of knowledge of how to mix with different cultures. White culture, basically. And at the time, we had a lot of Asian people, a few Latinos, and a lot of heavy Indian population, a lot more than I see now in the city. As I moved on, I went and I played college football. When I came back, Virginia Bim asked me to be the football coach there, so I ended up being the head coach for years and years. And helped to bring a lot of kids into the school and tutored kids and helped bring them through until a situation occurred, which, you know, I went through and then moved my family out. We actually moved to Piedmont for a while and then came back and opened my business here in Albany. And I've always, you know, because of my knowledge of growing up here, I've never really looked at a certain clientele I can kind of mix with anybody because I'm I'm real Afrocentric. I really understand where I come from, you know, who I am. Lot more than my parents, actually, because they grew up in the South. My father was a sharecropper and my mother had sixteen brothers and sisters in Mississippi. So they 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 had to follow a different line than I had to. And they taught me to be stronger and to really be self-determined. And I was always self-determined anyway, so I kind of grew up being extremely self-determined. Raised my sons that way, so now we're running our business here. And, you know, we've we have a very successful business. We don't really have been asked a lot a number of times to join in to try to get minority money, but I've always told them, we're not minorities. We're all basically from the same people in Africa, so just because we have different skin tones doesn't mean anything. Because, you know, we just go with our strengths and it's always helped us, you know, grow. So I think we'll be here for years and years to come. And thank you for the proclamation. It's a lot of good history that was told. I remember the village. Yeah, I remember a lot of the things that went on, so that was a very nice proclamation. Thank you.
Wow, so you actually remember the village. I would say I moved here later than that, so I far after that, so I was surprised and dismayed to hear about its history. What what do you remember about the village, if I may ask?
Well, there was a huge African-American population in the village. And at the same time, there was crosses up in the hills in Albany Hill that the John Birch Society would push fear into people with, so. Even though the people were there, they really didn't, after the fifty-six and in the sixties, then people really didn't venture into Albany that much. It wasn't until around sixty-eight through actually seventies, mid-seventies, when the city started to become a lot more diverse again and things started to change. I remember when I first was in school and I was a youngster, the high school students had a lot of battles with each other, a lot of fights, raised war, roots came out in the seventies. And when roots came out, it was like a war zone. And me and my friends would watch the older kids battling each other. And we said, when we get to high school, we're not going to have those things, so we, you know, we really pushed hard not to have a lot of racial strife between each other. And there's still all my friends. I actually left golfing with one of my buddies today and went to high school.
And so were your older siblings in high school? Were those some of the older students you were watching, or are they already passed out of high school at that time?
My brother and sister were both in high school. My brother had a really hard time when we moved here. He was a really great athlete. But at the time, only a certain amount of black kids could make each team. And it wasn't, it wasn't written, but it was no. So there'd be not, what, fourteen positions on the baseball team. Five black kids could make the team pretty much. And if you were better than or worse, you still didn't make the team. So it really hurt my brother. And he he pushed me real, real hard in sports. I remember when I was twelve or thirteen, he would take me to Live Oak and to other places and make me play at the Dolphins. Instead of my back down, I'm going to back down when I get back to high school, so. And if you back down, he's not going to let me come again. So I have to really stand up and play really hard, and people didn't know why I played that hard because my brother pretty much pushing me.
Yeah, well, I think we're without other going into details, we still see some of that have to be twice as good in the news today, the very recent news. I appreciate you sharing your time with us and some of your memories and current experience and past experience. I don't know if any other members had any other questions they wanted to follow up with, not that that's at all required, but.
No, I just want to thank Mr. Freeman, Anthony, for coming and picking up the proclamation and again, sharing your story. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you and take care and I wish your business many more fruitful years in Albany.
All right. Thanks a lot. Thanks.
Take care.
Okay, see you later. See you around.
With that, we will go to the City Manager's Report. City Manager, if you will, please.
Is there a hand up in the audience?
Oh, there is a hand up. Yes, I apologize. Thank you. It's turnabout time. I appreciate that. City Clerk, if you could let in the attendee.
Yes. Hey, is Freeman still here?
I don't know if he's still here or not.
Okay, well, I was trying to say that, you know, Mr. Anthony Coach Freeman is is a wonderful person. And, you know, it's just so sad that the color of human beings' skins separate us. And Mr. Freeman is a wonderful, wonderful community member. He was my football coach in high school when I got to be quarterback for the football team. And he's a wonderful coach, very nice and just teaches you and guides you. We're lucky to have Anthony as as a community member. I think he's definitely a solution for a lot of problems that Albany deals with. And he's such a great guy. I was going with some undergoing some hardships a few years back. And Anthony noticed and he came to me and he he offered if I, you know, can do some work. He said, Jeremiah, would you like to do some work to earn some money? And I said, I would love to. And so I helped him do some work and what a great leader of the community. So that's what I just want to say. It's Anthony Freeman. You are the man.
Thank you, Mr. Finguolo. And now, doing my job and looking to see if there's any other hands raised. I don't see any. Thank you again, Councilmember Gary. So now we can move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to draw attention to an updated webpage we have regarding Courtney's Creek. This includes a long, long history of restoration work on this critical waterway that ultimately flows to our bay. And through the restoration work, you see down at the bottom of the page that we've included an update regarding really what the MOU between the three agencies entails for maintaining the restored parts of this creek, as well as the funding spent across the three agencies per that MOU. So you can dig into the guts of that on this page and we will include updates to this as relevant over the course of the fiscal year. So I'd appreciate any feedback once you've had a chance to look at that. And my appreciation to the public work staff that worked on this in coordination with our finance department to get this information so front and center and transparent. I know it was an additional to do and they did a great job. Also, waiting to see if we'll have an image here. I wanted to draw the council's attention to the work that you gave us direction to do, which we absolutely appreciate and are excited to launch. You saw it in the Friday E News, the Low Income Residence Program, Assistance Program for Food and is available now at our senior center. Very simple way to get connected, either by phone or email to become eligible for groceries and essential items. There it is, essential items on the first Friday of each month at ten a.m. So again, thank you to the staff, primarily in our Recreation and Community Services Department. There's Jess Cosby, one of our superstars of the program, who have taken council direction and seen this program implemented. As a reminder, business license renewal letters were sent. Thank you to all that have submitted their payments. We are working through those payments, so if you have not heard a confirmation yet, it is forthcoming. Any questions in the meantime can be directed to the Finance Department. The Alameda County Organics Reduction and Re Ordinance is now in place, requiring that compostable materials, organics, food waste be kept out of landfills to prevent, further prevent the production of methane, which is a potent greenhouse gas. The city is providing support to those needing help with this program. To learn more, you can visit albanyca.org slash recycle. And we also have the opportunity for free indoor sorting bins on a first-come, first-served basis for particular businesses, institutions, and as well as property owners and multifamily properties of five or more units. The Friendship Club is our childcare program in Albany, which is very well-received and provides a strong after-school enrichment program. We are bursting at the seams usually with a waitlist. But this year, the program is offering a February break camp that's forthcoming. February twenty-second through Friday, February twenty-fifth, when the school district has a welcome holiday break or a week off, I should say. And so the camp, if folks are inclined, is from nine a.m. to four p.m. And it's a great way to keep your kids busy during a week off. So check our website or contact the Recreation and Community Services Department at five one zero five two four nine two eight three to learn more about that opportunity. And as recently shared, the Recreation and Community Services Department began in-person programs, which was a big effort for that department as they transitioned and are really balancing both priorities now in terms of meal delivery, which what involved a significant component of the department. And now also starting up these enrichment and engagement programs. So please take a look at our recreation guide to get a sense of the new offerings. The Albany Dog Park is now open and I see it's in full swing. So after a seasonal closure for maintenance, the dog park is definitely being well-used again and loved. Seven days per week are the hours from eleven a.m. to eight p.m. We ask that folks using that park and the doggies as well try and respect the neighborhood as it is a very busy area. And also wanted to repeat some of the promotion of this free online screening that is scheduled on Speaking Truth to Power, February twenty-second. On February twenty-second, from seven to nine p.m., the Albany Library and Albany Film Fest will present the film Barbara Lee Speaking Truth to Power. As part of the screening, Representative Barbara Lee and filmmaker Abby Ginsberg will discuss this new documentary, which looks at the complex story of Representative Barbara Lee, a steadfast voice for human rights, peace, and equality in the U.S. Congress for over two decades. Community members can register ahead of time by going to our aclibrary.com page, the county's page, and you will receive a link to screen the film in advance of the event. That concludes my report.
You're muted, Mayor.
You're muted.
I am not having a good night. Thank you. If anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on the City Manager's Report, please press your raise hand button. You will have one minute. If you are on the phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Note, this is for questions and comments on the City Manager's Report only. If you have comments on matters not on the agenda, the time for those is next. In this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council, not other attendees, and respect each person that has spoken. The council wants everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not be intimidated by others' comments or reactions. I am checking to see if any attendees have their hands raised, and I do see one attendee, two attendees have their hands raised. City Clerk, if you could, you have. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Jeremiah. There's a general question. I think you mentioned the the COVID testing site, the library. I was just wondering what what day of the week that was or what time that was available.
Thank you, Mr. Finguolo. I don't know if the City Manager wants to go ahead and answer that or.
Sure, Mayor, if you'd like me to respond.
Yeah.
One-on-one. Sure. Yeah, it's not administered by the City of Albany, so the most timely information to find out is by going into Curative Labs, curative.com. They will, at some times, it was a walk-up and then more recently it was by appointment. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. And City Clerk, yes. And you are muted, Ms. Schwartz. And you're.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I'm maybe very confused tonight. Are we at public comment or?
It is.
The manager's report.
It is confusing. We had a change in procedure a few months ago. We didn't used to have comments on the City Manager's Report, but we thought it would be useful for people to be able to ask questions. So this is not good of the city. This is for questions on the City Manager.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Yep, thanks for asking. And I think with that, there's no other attendees wanting to ask a question or comment on City Manager's Report. So now we all want to go to the city. This is for attendees to provide the council comments, information, and questions on an item that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now. By phone again is star nine. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff for comment. And yes, seeing that there's only a few hands raised, the City Clerk is providing three minutes. Thank you. And yeah, seeing that there's only a few hands raised, the city clerk is providing three minutes. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Schwartz.
Good evening. I am Susan Schwartz, head of Friends of Five Creeks, all volunteer group working for, now it's going into 26 years, on the creeks and watersheds of Albany and neighboring cities. Something I hadn't planned to say, I really want to thank Mayor Gary for telling that story about Coterney's Village. We have told our volunteers that story for some years now. And we have an analogous story concerning Native Americans and Asians for volunteers on Cerrito Creek. I really tried to convince young people in particular that if they really look into their local history, they can find all of rural history. And I think that's very important and I'm so glad that that's becoming better known in Albany, how much it is part of the rest of the, of the world. You can find what, what has gone on just wherever, wherever you are. My main topic is the letter that you have thanking you and talking about progress on Coterney's Creek. Very briefly, I came home to find the report on Coterney's and the long sought explanation of how the, the maintenance fund is being spent. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I'm, I'm happy to have it. I want to thank Albany for updating their list of homeless services. I want to thank them for having particularly Margot Cunningham, but work because on, on the, on the creek below eighth. Because if there weren't those people, we would not be able to be doing what we're doing at Ninth Street, next to the Little League Fields, where now I very hope, I very much hope you all take a look at what it looks like with that meadow, not an overrun homeless camp. And you can see what the trail will look like when the trail is completed and how lovely the Little League Fields and the adjacent creek are going to be. So that's a pitch. Let's get the trail built. You have the money, you have the plans, get it, get it done. And thank you so much.
Thank you and Friends of Five Creek for, Creeks for all the work.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeremiah and yes, Janelle, I was applauding you and I was clapping after your five-minute reading. I just really enjoyed the enthusiasm in your voice and it was a fun story to listen to. I really appreciate it. And I was just gonna let the public know that there's a few places to get food if you know, your family are, you're running low on food. I know rent is high and bills are expensive. And so there is a, a free food bank next to the North Berkeley Bart Station. It's just right up the street. And they're giving away free food Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It's called the Berkeley Food Pantry. From 2 o'clock to 4 p.m. for pickup. So you could go there Monday, Wednesday, or Friday and show up around 2 o'clock. I would suggest getting there early because a line does form. And it's open to Albany residents. So if you bring your ID or your driver's license and you have an Albany address, you get free food and, and this food is collected from Trader Joe's, Sprouts, Whole Foods, and Costco. And this is all ran through the Alameda County Food Bank. So the easiest way to get food is to call this phone number for the Berkeley Food Pantry. It's area code 510-525-2280. And if you call that number, you could actually get the free food delivered to your front door without even having to go there in person. You know, risking COVID or whatever reasons you have to, you know, stay at home or to get your food delivered at home. It comes with four bags of food. One, one bag is full of meat. Another bag is full of vegetables. Another bag is full of miscellaneous breads or gluten-free breads. And another bag is full of miscellaneous items as well. I really suggest, you know, you giving this a try. Again, the phone number is 510-525-2280. So simply just call the phone number and give them your address and tell them your name. And you'll get food delivered to you once a month for free, right at your front door. So there it is. That's the simplest and the easiest way I could help the community and offer good for the city with information to get access to free food to your front door.
Thank you, truly for the good of the city. Hello. You are now on mute. And we can hear you now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, the, I have unmuted. Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to mention that you all know that we've had pretty heavy rains this winter. And with that, we'll have more heavy rains to come. But it's been brutal on our, on our street. Our reconstruction is on the city's agenda, but I'm just afraid that if they don't get attended to fairly soon, we'll rapidly end up with gravel roads and throughout the city of Albany. So I just urge the city to do whatever is possible to make repairs and reconstruction of the streets of Albany as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, you are muted at the moment.
Oh, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yes, I'm a resident on Pier Street and it appeared that we're being overlooked over here on Pier Street. It's a very high density, over 1,000 residents right here, high-rise, very dense, high-density area. And high tax paying as well. No freeloaders here. And, but we're being ignored by the city. Right now, we have this industrial-looking fence here that's crumbling and there's a big hole that was, you know, cut open again by street people. And they using that big hole as an escape route after they break in cars and do other kinds of crimes on the street. And it's very, it's, it's a safety issue as well. If you don't repair that, if kids go through there and gets on the freeway, and it's also a safety issue for the residents here in Albany, I mean on Pier Street. We'd like to, we want that fence re- replaced, not just repaired, but replaced. It's, it's in very bad shape. I invite all the council members to come and look at it. We're part of the city, but somehow the side of San Pablo is being ignored. And I believe when Soul Strand was here, some of the council members know him. He goes to the city council all the time and he was saying that we pay a big portion of the city's taxes. He was saying 10 to 12%. And also, we need more patrols here. We hardly get any police patrols. The crime is going up over here as well. And also the, oh, that fence, you might as well continue the concrete fence that stopped abruptly in front of our driveway. Okay, that fence was supposed to go all the way to Peggy Thompson Park when they're building the park. The park has been finished for years and the, the fence is nowhere to be found. I mean, we still have this crummy industrial fence and a neighbor told me the other day while walking her dog, the freeway was cleaning, pressure washing the fence and pushing all the dirt over to our street. And one last item, that there's a dead tree next to the bus stop. Oh, the hole on the fence was next to the bus stop, by the way. It's huge. A person could walk right through it. The dead tree next to the bus stop as well was removed, but not replaced. We need it replaced.
Thank you very much.
We need more attention here on Pier Street and we need a rep.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any more hands raised. We'll move on to the consent calendar. This is for items that are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Do any council item? I see a council member McQuaid, you have an item you would like removed?
Seven dash six, please.
Very good. Are there any other items that any other council members would like to have removed? Seeing none. Go to attendees. Are there any items that any attendee would like to remove? I see one attendee has their hand raised.
Hi, it's Jeremiah. Well, yeah, of course, seven, six, good calls. But also, seven, five, please. I'm surprised nobody said seven, five. But yeah, seven, five and seven, six, please.
Okay, well, we just lost you. I was gonna have you go ahead and comment on seven, five. The city clerk can, can bring you back so we can hear your comment on seven, five.
Seven, five. This is about an Albany officer retiring. And I'd like to talk about it. This officer is a great guy. He was actually what was right with the police department. Sure, this guy's, the color of his skin is white, but he didn't, that didn't get to him. He was a person. I, I've had so many, you know, interactions with Officer Lumby. And you know what I can remember from every single one? A huge smile on his face. And just a nice person. You know, I, I don't know where he's going or what he's doing, but he's a great officer and it's sad to see him go. I always saw him at Sprouts, I saw him around Albany, and he was a great officer. So Officer Lumby, you know, I respect you very much and congratulations on your time with this.
Thank you, Mr. Vingwillo. Moving on to item seven dash six, Councilmember Nathan?
No, it was, it was me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You say, not a good night. I need more sleep.
We'll, we'll get you through this. We'll all get through it together.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I just want to recuse myself on, on this one as it is a waiver of fee permits for an event that the community foundation is fiscal sponsor. So I, I would like to recuse myself. So if we could have a vote separately on this one, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, great. I do have a, a comment on seven dash six. I don't know if the event as, as a part of the encroachment permit is required to provide additional bike parking such as is done with the tri, the Albany Triathlon. But I suggest that that be a condition of the permit. So, you know, additional temporary bike racks, because I imagine a lot of people may bike there and overwhelm the racks that are by the pool there. I think given those wave racks, there's maybe, maybe 20 spaces. And I could see that there would be far more people potentially biking there, particularly as the purpose of the event is to actually get people moving and grooving. So I don't know if, how other council members feel about adding that condition in the encroachment permit. I don't know if that's something we can add to the approach encroachment permit. I'm putting staff on the spot. I didn't ask this question ahead of time. I apologize. I don't know if the city manager can give, give a response on whether that's feasible or not.
We have the staff report author here with us, Jeff Bond.
Fantastic.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jeff Bond, the community development director. Mr. Mayor, yes, I think we can incorporate that into the conditions of approval and we'll work with the applicant to figure out how best to do that.
Great, thanks. Presuming the rest of the council is amenable to, to adding that. Okay. Well, maybe to simplify things, move them wrong. I'll, I'll take the, go ahead and make a motion to.
Yeah, comment still.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. City clerk, if you could, please admit the attendee. Have their hands raised.
Hi, yes, what a wonderful event. We, we could have more like it. I was just wondering the impact on our public works department. If, you know, it's gonna cost any extra, or I was just wondering the impact on our police department, if we're gonna offer any extra patrol for the event, you know, to keep it safe, to keep speeder, you know, high-traffic speeders, you know, at bay. Also, what's the point of an encroachment permit if time after time again, we always waive the fee? It's kind of redundant or something in a way, having an encroachment permit if we always waive it. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies for being on the ball, calling on attendees. Would staff like to respond to the question about whether encroachment permit fees are waived as a matter of course for all events? I don't personally know. I imagine we'll hear about the ones where they're not waived, so.
That's exactly correct. If, if there is a fee waiver, we bring it to council. So I think it's been our practice for Slaunus Stroll. There probably have been others. They're not jumping into my mind at the moment, but general practice is we charge what's in the master fee schedule unless it comes to council for your authorization to waive the fee. And if I, if I may, with respect to the other part of the comment, there probably will be a modest amount of overtime from our Public Works Department and Public Safety Department, primarily, I would expect, the Police Department. We don't have a precise plan for that yet. We'll develop that as, as we get closer to the event. But it's, it's not anything on the scale of, say, the Slaunus Stroll, which is a, a much more significant expenditure of overtime funds to help support that event.
Thank you, Director Bond. And I see another attendee has their hand up.
Thank you. I may have missed it, but I'm curious where the event is going to be held. It's not mentioned in item 10, does it, us, seven dash six or whatever it is? Sorry, I'm just curious what street it would be.
Certainly, I, I might even be able to answer that one, sleepy as I am. I think it's Memorial Park. If my understanding is correct, specifically the southern side of Memorial Park.
It, it's all the way around Memorial Park, because I understand that the, the street closures are all the way around. I'm not exactly sure what the running route is. The, that would, Memorial Park area would be affected.
Very good. Thank you. So actually with that, maybe Councilmember McQuaid, you want to move the consent calendar minus seven dash six?
Sure, I'll move consent minus seven dash six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember McQuaid and seconded by Councilmember Nathan, who approved the consent calendar less item seven dash six. City clerk, if you poll the council.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And I will move item seven dash six with the addition of a condition in the encroachment permit of providing additional temporary bike parking by providing temporary bike racks.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, myself, and seconded by Councilmember Nathan. Please go ahead and poll the council.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Recuse.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, let me just make sure I'm, since I know I'm, I'm not totally on the ball here, let's make sure I'm not skipping something. Okay, we are moving on to presentation now, which is presentation of the quarterly financial update. Um, staff, if you would kindly present a report. Hi.
Hello. I'll try to make this quick, uh, Mayor Jordan, so that you can, you can go rest.
It is only the most important thing that we're responsible for.
Details. So I am going over the second quarter update to the budget. The, so we're now halfway through the year and we have collected forty percent of our expected revenues. It's important to note that that does not show any transfers currently and transfers are a significant portion of our revenue. So this isn't that scary old number. Um, we, we don't need to be worried about this quite yet. Our property taxes did come in. That's something that we always see the majority, uh, the first half anyway, come in, in December. So that's right on track. Our expenses are at fifty-one percent of budget. Again, that's expected because there are a handful of larger items that come in at the beginning of the year, um, the pension and the insurance costs. So that is also, um, expected. Um, the, uh, there are a couple of charts in the staff report. There is, the chart one shows our expenses by fiscal year for the first quarter and the second quarter. Um, expenses are steadily increasing. Uh, and then the next chart shows revenues. You'll see the revenues have increased a little bit. One important note to that is the property transfer tax. We received a large amount of property transfer tax this, um, this year. We've already exceeded what we budgeted. The same thing happened last year, but this is not something that we can necessarily rely on. We did increase the tax and we anticipated a slight increase because the tax was increased a year ago. But there have been a significant increase in the number of transactions. Uh, this was seen, you know, across the United States during the pandemic. So we really need to get a little bit more experience with this under our belts to see, you know, where we're kind of gonna even out. So I'm, I'm not anticipating that that trend will continue at such a significant rate. Um, then the last chart, I'd like to explain a little bit more. Again, this chart shows our growth of revenue compared to our growth of expenses. It does not include the transfers and that, some of that would, would have been made up. Some of the expenses we reimburse with those transfers, but not all of them. I'm going to try next quarter to figure out a way to show that increase better, um, so that you're getting more of an apples-to-apples. Uh, this presentation was given to the Financial Advisory Committee last week, uh, last Wednesday. And so this is something that I also kind of touched on with them. Um, but I'm gonna try to explain this a little bit better in your next staff report so that you can kind of see how, you know, the general fund revenues are growing compared to expenses and kind of what we're going to need to make up eventually. That said, I did kind of look through and see if I could, you know, give you an idea of where we would end the year, but there are still a lot of things that are up in the air right now because of COVID. We still have additional expenses that we, you know, haven't had in the past. We did have them last year because last year was in the pandemic, but we had more of them last year, so I'm anticipating less, but I don't know where we'll end up. Same thing with revenues. Revenues have been, um, affected in unexpected ways. At first, we thought that our sales tax revenues would go down. They did in other counties, but in, in other places. But in our city, we didn't see that decrease. Um, and our, obviously, we just talked about our property transfer taxes kind of exploding. So there are a lot of things that I, I'm hesitant to say, here's where I think we're gonna end up because there's still a lot of unknowns. Um, so that, with that, that is where we are halfway through the year.
Thank you very much.
Sure and sweet.
Are there any, um, questions from any council members? I am not seeing, uh, yes, Councilmember McQuaid.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm just coming to the, uh, staff report again, and I'm, I'm curious where the, um, federal funds are. Am I not seeing them? Are they counted in this? On the spreadsheets?
I'm sorry, which, which funds?
The federal funds, the, um.
Oh, yeah, they're not on here. This is the update for the operating budget. Yeah, those are in a different fund and not accounted for.
Just wanted to make sure, sort of knew where they were. Okay, thank you.
Does any other council member have a question?
I do.
Yes, go ahead, please, Councilmember Gary.
Thank you so much, Heather, for presenting this. I just wanna know, um, on the budget, can you show me where the transfers are that were forecasted or?
Um, so I haven't made those yet. The, where you generally see them is in different departments. So FIRE has a transfer. That one goes out to the EMS fund. Public Works has transfers in the revenues line. Community Development has one. And as you go through, we'll skip to Public Works, just what, I don't wanna get anyone motion sickness, but give me a minute. So Public Works, uh, my, my general go-to is maintenance, but right-of-way works too. You'll see transfers in and it tells you on each line what we've budgeted for, um, each individual transfer in and from which tax. So we, for public right-of-way.
Sorry, that hazard interrupt, interrupting. I have a sense you might be showing your screen or intending to show your screen.
Did that earlier too.
That's okay.
Well, I didn't give anyone motion sickness.
There we go. Mission achieved.
Look, it's right where I wanted it to be. Okay. So you'll see in public right-of-way, you have a transfers in line. And each transfer in is, um, detailed by which tax it, it is coming, which special tax it's coming in from and what was budgeted and obviously what happened last year. So once we've made those transfers, you'll see them here to offset some of these expenditures.
And do you know when you will make those transfers? Will that be on the next?
I'm hoping to have that on the next. I've been focusing on trying to get the CAFR done and a handful of other things. So my, I hope that we'll, we'll be show these transfers next time.
All right, thank you so much.
Just by way of either showing ignorance or potentially helping others understand this. So taking the Measure F Street and Storm Brine example, that is a specific property tax measure. It's a special tax. Um, so it is dedicated to those purposes. And so those go into their own fund. Um, I presume the transfers in are to pay for staff time administering, uh, repair of streets.
So they pay for a handful of things. You'll actually notice that some of these taxes are listed in several places. So, um, again, the maintenance is a good one. You see that Measure M, Parks and Open Space, is listed under Parks Maintenance. It's also listed under Creeks and Open Space. So we're basically showing on these lines what the transfers from the special revenue taxes are covering. So Parks and Open Space Measure M is helping to cover a portion of the Creeks' maintenance for, um, for this. It looks like some, uh, miscellaneous supplies and professional services, which is, you know, the, the Creek, uh, maintenance and things like that. In, you, in the public right-of-way, yes, the Measure F is transferring in to cover both wages, but also certain, ex, certain other expenses specifically related to public right-of-way that are covered by, uh, Measure F. So we only make those transfers to cover allowable expenses. And you'll see, if, if we were looking at the fourth quarter of last year, you'd see that the transferred expense is the lesser of the portion of the budget that this revenue covers, the portion of the expense that this revenue covers, or this line. Because this is specifically what council appropriated. If for some reason expenses exceeded budget, we would still only transfer this maximum, but we transfer the lesser of allowable or what was appropriated so that we make sure we stay within those. This is for a specific purpose.
And again, I, I think my understanding and maybe this helps for people that hear is that capital expenditure, say, a contract for, say, a paving contractor is, is not a part of this accounting, that's separate accounting.
This is specifically operating. So our operating budget is budgeted for in the general fund, but some, uh, special revenues allow for support, um, to pay for the operating portion of the city, like the portion of the Public Works Director's salary that goes towards maintaining these different things or the portion of the maintenance worker salaries that go towards maintaining these things. So the transfers in are covering operating expenses related to these special revenues, whereas the capital expenses are coded directly to those revenues.
Yeah, part of the reason I raise that price is because I have an engineering degree and that doesn't show up in the, what people refer to as the budget, but the city spends, you know, many millions of dollars a year so we can actually have a city with sewers and storm drains and roads and whatnot. Um, so properly thinking that's actually is a part of the budget for the city. It just doesn't show up in the operating budget. Um, are there any other, any other questions? I do have one other question, which is if you can make us, you can take us all the way back to the top. Uh, she's gonna cheat. So, uh, we have a lot of detail on expenditures, but not similar detail on revenues. So for instance, I, I don't know where the property transfer tax, which of these line items appears. So I, I'm both curious, that specific question, but in general, would it be possible? Probably is possible, but reasonable to have more deed, more of a breakdown on the revenue side so we can kind of see which taxes are bringing and what, how much.
So it's possible. And I showed the Financial Advisory Committee last Wednesday kind of a little bit more detail. Um, this is, and I said then, you know, the thing that I hate when my staff says it to me, this is the way we've always done it. So this is how it has historically been presented, and this is how it is presented in different categories on the audit. And so this allows you to kind of compare this to audited financials. In the detailed portion, I still don't break it out a lot. The property transfer taxes in your franchise and other taxes line, because there's like fifteen lines within that one. Some of them are very small, um, like, or, or their, your utility users' taxes are in there. Our franchise fees are in there. The racetrack taxes in there, the, you know, there's, there's a number of smaller taxes. And if we really listed out everything, this report instead of twenty-three pages would be like fifty-something. And so it, this is kind of, I, I haven't added to what we've presented previously. I can, but there's a, this is kind of the line where we've settled of, this is detailed, but not overwhelming. But the, uh, the information is available if people would like it.
Very good. Thank you so much. I cannot see in the moment if there are uh, hands raised, so I'll land the, I guess there are hands ready. Thank you, Director Rotten. Um, City Clerk, if you go ahead and hit the first attendee.
Hi, yes, um, I was wondering, it's a big staff report, a lot of numbers, a lot of lines. Um, I was wondering if possibly you could let the public know or city council know and, and myself, how much the city is either budgeting or spending, uh, per year uh, to, what is it, Berkeley Food and Housing? I was looking somewhere, I, I think it was close to a million dollars. I just, I just wanna get the exact number. Uh, just that way the public and everybody knows how much City Albany is, um, paying Berkeley Food and Housing.
Thank you, Mr. Vingwillo. And City Clerk, if you can bring in the next attendee. And you are still on mute?
Uh, yes, um, I'm on Pier Street resident. I'd like to know, like what I said earlier, um, from the, from the city finance, um, person. The, the residents in Albany, I mean, on Pier Street, how much are we contributing to the real estate taxes here? It's a very high-density, um, short street, but we're contributing quite a bit. I'd like to know how many percent we're contributing. You don't have to give that now, but, uh, if you can, you know, send it to me, I'll, offline, I'll give you my email.
Thank you. Yes, indeed, an interesting question. Um, Director Rotten, I don't know if you are willing to, not weighing with, not weighing with numbers, but just like, is this an answerable question? Is this, are these feasible questions potentially to answer? Not that you're being directed to answer them.
In theory, if I knew how much someone's property tax was, I could say, this is what your tax is in comparison to, like, as a percentage of the entire city's tax.
Well, I think the question was that the Pier Street, um, residents is on Pier Street. How much do they pay in aggregate as a portion of, say, the city's property tax?
We don't get the information like that. I would have to look it up individually.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then the prior question, and I don't know, this might be, I don't know, a question for yourself or the city manager. If you happen to know what the, the contracted amount of Berkeley Food and Housing is? Or even what category that would show up in, but I'm sure it doesn't show up as a line item.
No, it doesn't. And Berkeley Food and Housing is paid for by a number of funding sources as well. Um, so it's not just general fund money. But the contract, it, it always comes to council before it is approved. Um, and it is, I don't, off the top of my head, know exactly how much it is. But again, it's covered by a number of different funding sources.
Thank you. Right, this is a, an item for the council to receive. I don't know if there's any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Director Rotten. And we will move on to the next item. The next item is consideration of an ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash zero-one, amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, which regards law enforcement to add Section eight dash twenty-two, entitled Safe Storage of Firearms. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I will give a brief staff report. At your December meeting, the council asked that we prepare this and bring it back for your review. The ordinance prohibits the keeping of a firearm in our residence unless stored in a locked container or disabled with a trigger lock. It provides for.
Attorney, I, I hate to interrupt, but I think maybe you have something rubbing your microphone.
Oh, sorry. I, I think my paper is, is.
Yeah. Know how that happens, sure.
Um, did you hear any of that or should I repeat?
Uh, I'll leave it. I, I think we're okay to keep going.
Sounds good. So there are certain exceptions to this requirement. Um, if you are maintaining your firearm or using it for self-defense, um, those are in line with other ordinances that cities have adopted. Um, we've also, as discussed at the December meeting, allowed for some flexibility and enforcement of whether it's considered a misdemeanor or infraction. We did still have some concerns regarding rifles and shotguns and vehicles, so, and preemption, so we did not include that in the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but at this point, we are recommending that the council approve first reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-two. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but at this point, we are recommending that the council approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one.
Thank you, City Attorney. Do any council members have questions at this time? Not seeing any, or yes, Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, I don't see how we are enforcing this. I know there's a thousand dollar uh fine. And so I would just like an explanation on how we are enforcing this ordinance.
I don't think we're actively going from house to house, if that's what you're asking council members. Yeah. No, no, no. So, so if, if, if we already had a legal reason to be in a residence. And we saw that firearm was not properly stored, then we would have grounds to cite an individual. And we could either cite them under a misdemeanor, which has um potentially criminal implications and higher fines. Or an infraction, which is um more of a citation process and has a much lower fine, starts at a hundred dollars.
So can that be somewhere written in this? Because the way it reads, I mean, you know. It's not telling me information about, you know, the enforcement. So I think that should be somewhere in this ordinance. So we can help the reader. I don't know how he would, he would frame that. But uh, for purposes, especially someone's constitutional rights, you know, one would come thinking that, you know, they're. Going to be some type of home invasion. I mean, we definitely don't want to see what happened in Minnesota this week with the young man. So I would just like to see more of a description on the enforcement category of this ordinance, if possible.
We, we don't typically do that, but if that's the pleasure of the council, I mean, I think it's implied um in all of our ordinances. That we wouldn't be enforcing them unless we had legal authority to do so. But if you want additional sentences added, given the nature of this ordinance, that's a pleasure at the council and we can do so.
I, thank you. I, I do see there is one commenter. Maybe we um take that attendee's comment and then we can bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, um, I was just thinking about an easy way to enforce this. Um, you know, the, the fire department. The inspector comes around and checks all the fire extinguishers every year for the businesses, right? So maybe the police department could do the same thing. I didn't know there were so many guns in Albany. I mean, I don't own a gun. I don't like guns. I don't want nothing to do with it. But now that we're talking about it, I'm kind of scared of thinking. All these houses and residents in Albany just have, has guns inside. But, you know, sure, constitutional right to bear arms. But yeah, I think people have the constitution, constitutional right to, you know, follow the rules. Sure, you have a right to bear arms, but it's got to be locked up safe. So I think the easiest way to implement this. Um, is to have a, a gun log with the chief of police and and the chief of police. The chief of police should know where every gun is in Albany and every home. He should know how many guns are in each home or whatever. I mean, I may be speaking for myself on this. I'm sure a lot of people have their own viewpoint, but um. I just think it would be a good idea to monitor the amount of guns and. Just in case, you know, we have someone in Albany that has hundreds and hundreds of guns, you know, a whole arsenal. And it's right, you know, and the guy lives next to the, or whoever it is, lives next to the preschool. And it just goes unnoticed, you know, so something like that we should have in place, you know, policy in place to where the chief of police. At least knows where the guns are in Albany, and that's all confidential information or something. I don't know. Anyway, that's my idea.
Thank you. Um, just to bring clarity to that, to, to my knowledge, and City Attorney, please weigh in. There is no uniform database of who owns a firearm, and there is no legal basis for the creation of such database.
That, that's correct.
Thank you. Um, so bringing back to council, are there any, any comments?
I have a question. So far as the, the data, do you have anything to support this for our city? I know you've mentioned Alameda County. I know we took some information across the country. But what's, what's our data here in Albany as far as, you know, incidents that occurred? Shooting suicides, were we able to get that information to suffice this ordinance?
No, I don't have that information. If the council would like that, we would need to come back with that data.
I think that would be something we need to consider.
Yes, Councilmember Nathan.
I, I don't agree with that. I think these are pretty commonly, uh, that this type of ordinance is a, a pretty common thing in the Bay Area. And uh, it's a minor matter. I think we should go forward. I, I would be in favor of going forward with it.
But I think the state laws that we already have in place, such as the ones that just been passed AB two regarding these issues. I mean, we have state protection, so I mean, at the end of the day, why shouldn't we have this data in our city? So it can support the information that's being presented.
We are blessedly uh largely free of gun violence in Albany. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't ask people to properly manage their firearms.
Well, and, and I think with the, the population here in Albany and the wealth of uh intelligence in our community. Um, I, I can't imagine families not educating their children and educating their family on gun protection in their home. And don't get me wrong, I'm all about gun safety, but I think if we already have laws in place on a state level. And if we don't have that issue in Albany, I'm just trying to figure out, without the data to support that, how can we rightfully put this in place? I think education is the key, like I stated. So that's all I'm asking. It's just simple data that we can add to this ordinance. That's all I'm asking for.
As Councilmember Quinn.
I think that the state law is unfortunately a, a bit weak in this area. Um, and, and this just tightens it up, protects our, our citizens. I think we should move forward with it now, as um Councilmember Nathan said. Simply another layer of protection for our children, and I think that's important.
Totally agree with that. Again, I mean, what, I just don't understand why we can't have additional information to support this. This is simply running the numbers, finding out what our city has, so we can support this ordinance. That's all I'm asking for. I, and as far as the, the gun laws in, in the state, I mean, they're significant. You, when you purchase a gun, you have to go through the steps to make sure, and then the people that are selling the guns to stores, the shops are. They explain exactly what the law says and what you have to do in order to have a gun. So all I'm asking for is data to support that ordinance.
I'd like to move the ordinance if I could. Mayor, would you like me to move it a little more formally?
Uh, yes, please.
I move the council away the reading, airproof first, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-two oh one. Amending the Albany Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, by adding Section eight dash two-two, entitled Safe Storage of Firearms.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Um, I will offer that somewhat like uh. Deaths due to transportation, because we're a small city that happen extremely irregularly. So I don't know how much data there would, there would be on incidents like these, and they are not as common as traffic fatalities. Anecdotally, when my children were young, my, my wife committed to herself that she would, as they started having playdates at a place, would ask. Every specific family if they had firearms in their household, expecting the answer to be no. And Lumbold, the very first family, as she asked, they said, yes, we have two firearms and we can leave them sitting on our nightstand because we want our children to become used to them. And needless to say, our children die of a playdate there. Um, so it, it does happen. Um, shockingly, this, this particular, the, uh, one of the members of the couple was a police officer. Or a peace officer, which is sort of shocking, amazing, not in Albany, I want to emphasize, not in Albany. Um, so I do support this ordinance. Are there any further, further comments? Uh, City Clerk, seeing none, could you please poll the council?
Councilmember Nathan?
I.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
No.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
And Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Um, moving on to item ten dash one, this is under unfinished business. This regards consideration of a uh, a grant program uh for. Uh, small businesses to help them with past losses due to COVID. And to be able to survive in the continuing pandemic. Um, this grant program to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act funding that the city has received from the federal government. Welcome, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Jordan, council members. Uh, the item before you this evening is the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine. Allocating a million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds for a temporary COVID small business assistance grant program. Uh, to date, the city has received fifty percent of a little over, or a little over two point three million of the allocation. Of uh four point seven million in one-time funds. On October eighteenth, council appropriated nine hundred thousand of ARPA funds to create and, and market. A temporary COVID public assistance program facilitated by a temporary COVID community engagement specialist. This evening, staff is recommending um an appropriation of one million dollars um in ARPA funds. For a proposed small business grant program. Staff retained the services of California Consulting for research on the use of ARPA funds to support businesses. The consultants found that cities and counties across California are using their allocation for business recovery. In the form of small grants ranging between three thousand to twenty thousand for, uh, from, from smaller cities. And with some larger cities and counties awarding up to a hundred thousand dollars. The funds allocated are intended to provide recovery support uh to those sectors of the economy that are struggling the most. Uh, to recover from the pandemic. In building the grant program, the interest is to develop a distribution plan that would meet the requirement from the treasury rule. Without incurring hardship on businesses through complicated forms and reporting requirements. On January sixth, uh, twenty twenty-two, staff presented the program, uh, the proposed program to the Economic Development Committee. And asked for input on potential qualifications for a small business grant program. Uh, the input received um by, uh, by staff is summarized in this, in your staff report. Based on input received from the EDC and research done by the consultant, the program would provide grants in the amount of up to twenty thousand dollars. But not exceed fifty percent of the business uh two thousand nineteen revenue. Uh, to address the issue fairly, grant awards would be based on tiered criteria, rather, rather than on a first come, first served basis. And businesses uh would be able to qualify based on the following criteria. Businesses that were completely closed by public health mandates for at least six months during the pandemic. Businesses that were not forced to close but suffered revenue losses of greater than fifty percent in twenty twenty compared to twenty nineteen. And businesses that incurred substantial uh expense due to pandemic-related safety measures to stay operational. So at least ten percent of annualized revenue. The program will be structured so that necessary documentation is provided at the time of application. And subsequent follow-up or reporting will be kept to a minimum to reduce uh the burden on businesses and the amount of ongoing staff time. Qualifications to apply to the grant program would include, but will not be limited to businesses that have a City of Albany business license. A brick and mortar presence, operate as a not-for-profit business, are compliant with local laws. And the program will be structured in two rounds. Uh, after the first round, the program will be assessed based on existing COVID needs of the business community. Unmet needs could be addressed in the second round, as well as provide an opportunity for businessness, businesses to re-apply. If they did not receive funding in the first round for one reason, one reason or another. Pending the outcome of the long-term parklet program, funds uh may also be used for the implementation of new safety and access design element, elements. For long-term parklets. As for outreach, the application will be translated in different languages. We will use different outreach means such as posting on website in a business. And in a business newsletter, as well as advertising the e-news. Staff will also contact businesses most impacted by the pandemic directly and invite them to apply. We would also rely on our collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and Law and Avenue Association for outreach assistance. Also, as applications are received, and if we see that there is a sector of the business community that is missing in the application process. We will reach out to businesses to make sure that they are aware of the program and understand why they are not applying. If they are aware of the program. So that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Nathan.
Um, you mentioned input from the Economic Development Commission. Um, but we have uh comments from an individual um to the, that, that seemed to. Be under the impression there was uh that the Economic Development Commission has not. Uh, perhaps not had an opportunity to weigh in. What is the, what has actually happened with the? And I, if I recall correctly, this is in their work plans, so we solicited their uh recommendation. What, what is the status of that?
Well, the, the, the city staff, they, I did go to the kind of Economic Development Committee meeting on January sixth. And presented the proposed um business, small business grant program to uh the committee. And uh, we provided them with uh some proposed criteria and asked uh them for uh their input. On those criteria and the summary of um their responses is included in your staff report. And also included in the construction of this uh new program that we're proposing this evening.
Thank you. That's consistent with what I understood.
Any, uh, yes, Councilwoman McQuaid.
Thank you. Um, am I understanding that you do not have to have Albany business license to apply?
No, you do have to have a business, Albany business license to apply, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I'm reading the staff reported on. And I was confused, but that's good.
Any questions from the other two council members? Yes, Vice Mayor Tiven.
Um, yeah, thank you for the report. Just to clarify. My understanding, as I think it's phrased a little bit differently in two parts of staff report. Is the, what's the maximum amount of funding that can be received under this? Is it twenty thousand or fifty percent of the twenty nineteen revenue?
It's whichever is uh least, right? So if, if the revenue is over twenty thousand, then they would receive twenty thousand. But if fifty percent is less than twenty thousand, then they'll receive that uh with the fifty, that, uh, the amount of fifty percent. Is equal to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, so just to confirm, I, I, and you already said it, but just to put it out there, I, from reading the staff report, it appears that. All of the recommendations of the Economic Development Committee were incorporated into the construction of, of what the program has proposed. Um, I mean, I actually went through kind of like, I think I, line by line and, you know, splitting into two rounds and, and whatnot. Thank you. The, in the, in the applications, will there be sort of a listing or some examples of what could be covered by this grant? So I don't know, you know, if, if businesses can apply, seems that businesses can apply for some funding. Under a number of different um ways, but say, for instance. If they want to do something going forward, like the part that you mentioned, the long-term parklets, um, they can apply for funding. And they might be at the bottom of the list, depending upon the other businesses, but they can apply for funding to support the construction of those long-term parklets. To the extent that it will keep their business going. Are there, is there, will there be a list of uh items that? Won't be comprehensive, but that can help business owners think about, oh, you know, I wasn't aware I could apply for a grant to cover X or Y.
Uh, we can certainly include some of those uh additional, um, you know, uh, sources. For the, you know, those, yes, we can do that. For the, you know, those, yes, we can do that.
So I mean, the idea is that it's backfilling the revenue.
It is.
There might be some things that are less obvious is, you know, additional expenses that they had. They may not play even thinking about now, two years later, you know, yeah, that's where they had to buy all this stuff, you know, put in plexiglass to buy iters and all this stuff. And they might not, it might not come top of mind. But if we that's listed in the application, you know, business-based adaptations. That might help trigger them, trigger memory of some of the business owners.
And this can also be considered for the second round as well. You know, if we see that we have a lot of applicants for the first round and that that funding, the funding is used for the hardest hit businesses. But then there's, we see that there's a need for, you know, the the funding to cover some other additional expenses. We can certainly look at that.
Great, thank you. And referencing again the comments that Councilmember Mason referenced that we received as a council. One of the items suggested that. ARPA funds could be spent on items that could more generally benefit all Albany businesses and help build a stronger Albany business community. Would that be allowable with these funds or not allowable with the ARPA funds?
Yeah, we'd have to look into what program, you know, what kind of program we would like to implement. You know, because funding is limited, the goal of the program, as we're proposing it now, is to support businesses that were most affected by the pandemic. And that's really the purpose of the funding. For any additional programs that could benefit all businesses in Albany. Consideration, we need to include the availability of future ARPA funding as a one-time funding source as well. So we can't, you know, fund ongoing programs. And then treasury rule and the recommendation that the in the in the timeframe, right, to use the funding. We also heard very clearly from the EDC that at the EDC meeting that the grants should be distributed as soon as possible without delay. To struggling businesses. This is a comment we heard over and over again at the EDC meeting. So staff is, you know, anxious to get started on on this grant program.
Yeah, I I sort of support that, but I do think it's an interesting question. Not to delay this program necessarily, but but whether. Spending more generically to support Albany businesses and Albany business district would be inbound with the treasury rules, outbound with the treasury rules. So no, no need to answer now, but to put in mind. Unless there are other questions, I see one attendee has their hand raised. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, City Clerk.
Yeah, good evening. This one million dollar dollars allotted for the business portion. Is this also the AARP money the city was given? And we already did the residential portion. For this, I think with rent relief, I'm just wondering, this business is, is this going toward? You know, paying for their lease or, you know, PG&E bill or Comcast TV? Or, you know, new refrigerators or tables and chairs or pots and pans or? Like, what is this money going for? Is it to keep the business going? Because, you know, they ran out of shampoo and now they need to go buy more shampoo. Or is this to help the businesses pay their rent? Or I'm just, I'm just kind of confused, like a business is struggling. Is this money got to help pay for employees? Maybe that's a good one, help pay for employees. Maybe, maybe I should look at, you know, your list of requirements and everything like that. But my biggest my biggest concern was a bigger picture. How much money has the city been allotted? Is it two million or seven million? And after we allot this million dollars, how much is left over? Because what if the pandemic keeps going and we didn't put enough money into our residential programs? And we, you know, we put too much in our businesses and now people are homeless or people, you know, are homeless, but our businesses are doing good. But we didn't put enough in our residential. So just keep that in mind. I think this is great. Yeah, a million dollars is just a million dollars. Hopefully, there's enough money for emergencies for a residential if that comes up. Thanks.
Thank you. So Assistant City Manager, you may have answers to those questions in terms of what is the total amount that is. Anticipated to come to the city from the ARPA funds and approximately how much has been allotted, if any, to supporting residents?
Yes, as I mentioned in the in the staff report, the city stands to receive a little over four point seven million. And we, the city has received fifty percent of that allocation so far. And with and so far. As part of the business, excuse me, the COVID Public Assistance Program. And additional funding to support BFHP, the council has appropriated a little, just a little. Excuse me, about one point two million. So with the allocation of a million dollars to the business grant program. The council will have allocated about two point two million of the. Fifty percent of the allocation of ARPA funding received to date.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Yes, it made sense. And the two point two million would be a little bit is a little bit less than half of the total allocation that the city will receive. With the other half coming this summer, as I recall.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion of this item? Not seeing any of their emotion. Councilmember Nathan.
I will move the staff proposal as set forth in the staff report.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Nathan and second of Vice Mayor Tiven to move the staff recommendation. To create a small business grant support program using the ARPA funds. City Clerk, would you pull the council, please?
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan? Mayor Jordan?
You may be muted. I can't actually see you have a frame for you, so.
I think other council members.
Or maybe it's my problem.
Yeah, I can hear her fine.
I might have to leave and come back. That's the way it goes sometimes. Sorry about that. Vice Mayor, it's on you now.
Okay, Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if we should give a minute for mayor to come back.
That seems right.
To cast his vote.
There he is.
Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear. Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
And Mayor, what is your vote?
It is. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Zoomera, not my night. All right. Seeking to recover and move on. Bear with me. My machine here is not being my friend at the moment. All right. We are moving on to new business. Item eleven dash one. Which is a proposed recommend or recommended resolution in support of moratorium on the construction and expansion of factory farms and slaughterhouses in California. This is an item from Councilmember Gary. Councilmember Gary, would you like to present the item?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I don't think I need to read the memo entire in this entirety. I believe everyone has read it. But basically, I just want to get the buy-in from the council to support this. San Francisco recently did this resolution as well in support of this. After intense research and just collaboration with direct everyone. The 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 numbers and the events that are happening to animals is just. It's ridiculous, to say the least, but I understand that it's business. But still, we need to be able to control or at least have some type of saying what's going on in these factory farming. So that's.
Thank you. And to questions, Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. Was this was this item vetted by staff or brought to staff at all?
I presented it to the mayor at that point and got his buy-in and he provided good direction, so.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Gary. I didn't I didn't quite hear what you said. I'm sorry.
I said I presented the memo to the mayor. And then he advised me what was needed to present this memo.
So I think for my part. It did not go through staff for vetting. I mean, staff certainly saw the item. But I've, based on twenty years of experience, have in mind that the mayor's power is only to put stuff on the agenda. I forgot that we had adopted a policy to. To require items to go through staff. That said, I'm not sure this is of the nature that would normally go through staff. Since it's not specifically about any action that staff itself would take or anything specific to Albany itself. So that suggests, you know, we might want to have an adjustment to that policy, but I do apologize. That I didn't send it to staff for staff-specific recommendation on this.
Okay, I do have concern that we have a policy and it was inadvertently, I believe, skipped. So I'm wondering if we want to just postpone this until it goes through staff. Or whatever the council wishes.
Councilmember Nathan.
We have a lot of people who I think have waited, have, you know, sat through a good deal of other, many other items. And perhaps we should offer them a chance to comment in case they are not. Interested in coming back for another round. I should preface that by saying, yeah, we we just adopted a policy and I think we need to to apply it. I I'm 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 less sanguine about that it isn't, doesn't have a relationship to Albany because. We have a terrible animal cruelty problem at Golden Gate Fields. And a chunk of our budget comes from a type of animal cruelty that. You know, in some ways is worse than factory farming in the sense that. Animals that are slaughtered for food purposes. You know, are regulated. Those deaths may be awful, but they are regulated. And there are, you know, there's a whole field devoted to trying to. Do this as humanely as it can be done. And of course, there's all sorts of other issues as well. But on the the cruelty side, there is at least some kind of regulatory infrastructure in place. Whereas horses are out. Basically, you know, falling down with destroyed bones and, you know, it and suffer agonizing. Agonizing deaths. And this is not like something that happens once or twice a year. This is something that happens at every meet and happens to way too many horses. So I think that for us to take up an animal cruelty issue and not deal with Albany's animal cruelty issues. Would at a minimum open us to fairly well-founded accusations of hypocrisy. And it's something I think we should take up, but it's a much bigger discussion than this. But it is something that Albany needs to to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I will note again, this is about factory farms, which we do not have in Albany. Does not say that there aren't issues in Albany, but to my to my mind, the matter that Councilmember Nathan has raised is not necessarily a matter that staff would. You know, that's a policy matter. That's not like a matter that staff specifically would opine on. Councilmember McQuaid, I saw that you had your hand raised.
What I was originally going to say was that. Well, that may be that may be true, the agenda item, and what we need to focus on here is what's before us, not. Issues in Golden Gate Fields unless you want to bring something back that's more comprehensive.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm.
Let her let her finish, please.
No, that's that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
That's what I was going to say, that if we refer it back to staff, and I think we we must refer it back to staff. I think that there should be some consideration of cruel conditions closer to home.
Yes, Councilmember Gary.
Can we hear from the public, please? It would be so nice. Thank you.
Why? Yes, okay, I do have a question for staff. Given this discussion, and I think it might help frame some of the comments from attendees. Is this an item that staff would have substantial recommendations or opinion or advice on? And I'm putting you on the spot and you can say no answer at this time.
You know, I I'll be honest, I haven't studied the matter because I wasn't asked to. So I don't know that I have a really informed statement to provide. If it is extended to incorporate other elements, then certainly it would take some analysis. So it kind of depends on on what the overall content interest is by the council.
Yeah, I guess I was curious with it framed as being specific to factory farms.
Sure, Mayor. I don't envision, you know, normally what I would first look at with this policy in place the council recently adopted is. Does it have a direct impact on the city's operational elements? And again, while I haven't cited it directly, it's it's clear to say that the assumption is likely no. And then it's more of a higher level approach to this issue at large.
Thank you. With that, yes, so I can tell, no, you got your pen raised. I thought it was your finger, Councilmember McQuaid. Oh, you, there we go. Yes, go ahead. Please speak.
I'm coming in two different parts, I guess. And my my other question, I think we're still doing questions at this point, is. I'm not, we don't usually see staff reports with collaboration with other organizations. And I'm just kind of curious as to how that came about. There's, you know, lots of organizations that are doing work in this area. And I was just kind of curious how direct action everywhere was was included in the in the process.
Simply conversation.
Thank you.
Unless there are any other questions, we can go to. Public comment. I see that there are. Ten commenters, so I'm going to ask the City Clerk to put it to two minutes apiece, please. And if you agree with a prior commenter's comments, please feel free to express that. And with that, City Clerk, if you would go ahead and submit the first commenter. And you are still on. There we go.
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, hi. I did. I didn't know that it was me that was supposed to speak. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a little bit disappointed about this bureaucratic aspects of this. Proposal not having been seen by the staff, but I hope that. My remarks would have its impact, whatever it is. Regardless, my name is Nilu Farsham Bayati. I live in Albany. And first, I want to thank Councilmember Gary for proposing a resolution in support of a moratorium on the expansion of. Animal farming industry. I urge you all to consider the harms of this industry. And the benefits of instead helping the animal farming workforce to engage with the production of sustainable. And beneficial food systems. Your approval of this resolution will encourage other cities to follow suit. And would help the this resolution to reach the state legislature. And have a better chance of hopefully passing by our legislators. The animal farming industry, more than any other industry, endangers human health, pollutes air, water, land, and worsens our water crises. This industry relies heavily on our tax money to be profitable at the expense of plant-based food. Moreover, the animal act thrives on horrific violence against animals who feel pain, fear, and other emotions shared by humans. This violence doesn't start and end. This violence doesn't start and end with the killing of the animals. To maximize profit, the industry makes these animals' brief lives torturous by confining them to tight spaces that prevents them from turning and stretching, by castrating cows without anesthesia, by fattening chicken and turkeys to such extreme that they can't even walk.
Thank you, city clerk.
Only two minutes, you know, I was counting on three minutes. So I.
Hello.
Hi, my name is, uh, Dr. Crystal Heath, and I'm a veterinarian calling in favor of this resolution. I'm a UC Davis graduate, and we were trained in the importance of one health, which is the idea that human, animal, plant, and environmental health are all interconnected. And we know seventy-five percent of emerging diseases in humans come from animals. And research published this week, actually, by Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health, led by Dr. Aaron Bernstein, showed the cost of preventing the next pandemic is only five percent of what we are currently paying for COVID- nineteen. What are these preventative measures? Bernstein states that agriculture must be reformed to minimize or ideally reverse land conversion and demand for less sustainable food must also be curtailed. And we are currently facing outbreaks of avian influenza throughout the world. Israel is, uh, facing a shortage of eggs because of massive coals due to avian influenza. Our current reliance on animal agriculture threatens not only our public health, but contributes to climate change, biodiversity loss, antibiotic resistance, environmental justice issues, air and water pollution, worker exploitation, and untold levels of animal suffering. And you mentioned how these, uh, factory farms are regulated. Well, they're really not because these giant corporations funnel billions of dollars in lobbying into government and prevent li- a regulation from taking place. Um, and funnel billions of dollars of taxpayer money into their own pockets while destroying our environment. Iowa recently introduced a moratorium on factory farms, and we can do the same thing here in California. So I please urge you to support this resolution. It is so important for our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Carla Cabral, and I wanted to begin by uh, really expressing my immense gratitude to Councilmember Gary for supporting a resolution to put a moratorium on factory farms. The moratorium is vital and gives Albany an incredible opportunity to make a difference in the lives of constituents, animals, both human and non-human, workers, and the planet on which we all depend for our very existence. These incredibly destructive facilities receive millions of dollars from taxpayers of California, including the residents of Albany, while simultaneously being shielded from consequences by laws put into place to hide the abuse and exploitation we all know is happening. The facts are very clear. Slaughterhouses have been the site of some of the largest COVID- nineteen outbreaks in the United States. Workers are traumatized and experience higher rates of substance abuse, PTSD, and domestic violence from seeing hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals murdered on a daily basis. Science has proven over and over again, just as we see it every day with our very own companion animals, that every one of the victims of these facilities have emotions. They feel pain, fear, and stress. You spoke earlier of your dog park, and I saw the vice mayor's very cute cat in the background. I know you care about the well-being of animals. This resolution just extends that care to all species. So you've spoken about waterways. Animal agriculture contributes to the ongoing water crisis in California, with some facilities using up to four million gallons of water per day, and others pollute water sources with chemical fertilizers and manure. The permanent damage to the earth increases every day, but you can say enough is enough. Please, I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Alona Duhan, and I'm a small business owner along Solano Avenue in Albany. And I want to thank Councilmember Gary for proposing this city resolution in support of a moratorium. Uh, you have my full support for all the reasons that the prior speakers presented to you so very eloquently. I don't think I could match that, but I do have just a very personal connection with animals who are farmed in, in places like factory farms and slaughterhouses. I have a micro-sanctuary in my home where I have rescued chickens. And so this is very personal to me in the sense that uh, Vice Mayor Tiedemann has his cat, I have chickens, and, um, when I've seen and heard and smelled, you know, the sites around factory farms and slaughterhouses in California, it's really, uh, something that I can't sleep with well at night and, uh, just, it's, um, really, I feel, an abomination to our state. So I do hope that the city council does pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Yeah, I, I'm in support of this as well, even though, um, it came, the item came up kind of abruptly. Um, you know, hopefully, you know, we could, this could be on another city council and we can, um, keep working on this. You know, maybe a resolution tonight, and then upcoming meetings, we can, um, get down to the bottom of this and get organized on something that maybe we could suggest to oh, the governor of California, or even, you know, the, the state senate or, or something and and request, you know, federal laws and stuff. Um, I think this is a, we're on the right track for sure. This is probably all to do with the COVID- nineteen thing because of the the factories in China and, and all that. So it does need to be regulated for sure. Um, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Allison Morikawa Bernard. Um, myself, as well as a couple dozen others on this call as well. Um, want to thank Councilmember Gary for recommending this resolution. Um, it's important because of the harm these facilities inflict on workers, animals, the environment, and public health, which are far beyond, uh, what I have the time to mention here today. Uh, the livestock industry alone is responsible for at least eighteen percent of all greenhouse gas emissions, more than all forms of transportation combined. Factory farm animal production accounts for thirty-three percent of agricultural methane emissions. And due in part to the expansion of factory farming, the EPA reports a fourteen-point-four percent increase in methane emissions since nineteen ninety. Methane has eighty times more heat-trapping power than carbon dioxide during the first twenty years after its release. So it has a more devastating immediate impact on climate change. In factory farms, animals are housed closely together in high concentrations, encouraging rapid mutation of zoonotic viruses, leading to the next pandemic potentially. And manure lagoons in these operations pollute our groundwater and drinking water. Factory farms are also the leading cause of antibiotic resistance. According to an article in the American Journal of Public Health, eighty percent of all antibiotics in the US are sold for use in animal agriculture. About seventy percent of these are from classes important to human medicine. There is growing evidence that antibiotic resistance in humans is promoted by the widespread use of non-therapeutic antibiotics in animals. Please pass this resolution as a recognition that the government needs to step in and address the devastations caused by animal agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, hello.
You are.
Hi. Yes, my name's Curtis. I first want to thank Councilmember Gary for, uh, introducing this resolution. Uh, animal agriculture in this factory farming industrial complex is one of the leading drivers of deforestation, desertification, ocean, ocean dead zones, wild species extinction, um, zoonotic diseases, and world hunger. Um, aside from all of these things, uh, the workers are disproportionately, um, working-class minorities, um, blacks, Latinos, that suffer, uh, incredibly high rates of PTSD, uh, drug and alcohol abuse, and al- also suffer from, uh, you know, stressful work condition, work conditions, and have, um, like the physical injuries at a very high rate. Uh, so these, uh, people are also negatively impacted. Um, the animals, the conditions that these animals are in, they're con- confined in incredibly, uh, tight spaces. I've been inside facilities in Virginia, North Carolina, Iowa, and in California. And actually, one of the worst things I've seen was in California. Um, animals, mother pigs in crates where they couldn't turn around, where baby pigs were, uh, dead, living in their mother's feces. Um, and this is where ninety-nine percent of the animal products are coming from, not only in California, but across the state. These factory farms, these large windowless sheds that are breeding disease. And even though that these facilities may not be in Albany, Albany money is going towards, uh, uh, helping these facilities expand. Uh, and you mentioned Golden Gate Fields earlier. Golden Gate Fields actually qualifies as a factory farm because there are large amounts of animals, according to the EPA, living in tight space, and their food has to be brought in. So this, uh, this is all connected. Please, uh, say no to this and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having us. My name's Paul Darwin Pickleheimer, and I live, uh, near the north end of Solano, and I shop and dine in Albany all the time. I love the city, and I really appreciate the work y'all are doing. I'm, uh, honored to hear, be here tonight and witness you providing service to the city. Uh, yeah, thanks again for the support on this issue. The, the resolution about the moratorium on new and expanding factory farms in California. I think it's really important that y'all would support this bill, I mean, this resolution. Because, uh, while Albany doesn't maybe have a lot of factory farms, right? Um, the products themselves do come in and, and are sold in the city, so there's some level of responsibility there. And we know that factory farming is one of the major contributors to the climate crisis. So when we see climate refugees, you know, being thrust into that position around the world on a daily basis, like, that's partially something that has to do with all of us. And while we can't just, you know, snap our fingers and reinvent the food system overnight, um, something we can do potentially is ask California as a state, hit the brakes and say, hey, we don't want to build any more factory farms. So that's, that's the idea behind this moratorium and to ask the state to do it. So your support in that really would go a long way. There's a lot of groups, um, like Sunrise Bay Area and, uh, the city of San Francisco, uh, California, uh, CA Dems Environmental Caucus, their, uh, Animal Ag Committee also supports this. So it'd be really great to add the city of Albany to the list, um, because we want to try to advocate for this the best we can. I'm also a member of Direct Action Everywhere, like Ali mentioned, with a couple dozen of us here on the call tonight. So again, uh, thanks for your work and thanks for your help on this. Um, you know, it's no big deal if it doesn't get to come up tonight because of the procedural thing. It happens, so appreciate y'all just owning that and, and allow us to speak in favor tonight, and hopefully our words will help provide impact in the future. So again, thanks for your time, and, uh, I'll see you at the rest.
Thank you. Welcome. And you're still on mute.
Hello, um.
There we go.
Am I?
Yeah.
Um, so hi, my name is Ellie Swack. I would also like to thank Councilmember Gary for introducing the resolution supporting a moratorium. I would also like to, um, just make a short comment on the concerns with Golden Gate Fields. I really don't think these should conflict. Um, Golden Gate Fields, of course, also involves horrible animal cruelty. Um, but these do not have to be seen as you can only do one or the other. Um, I would, of course, also support any kind of action taken in regards to Golden Gate Fields. But, um, given the importance in getting the ball rolling on a moratorium as soon as you can, um, with how many countless animals are suffering and dying every day with climate change getting ever worse, and with the imminent threat of new pandemics, um, I would urge the resolution, I'm sorry, I would urge the council to, um, strongly consider passing the resolution today. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Oh, you went back on mute.
All right, I think we're good. Uh, yeah, my name is Almira, and I am the lead organizer of Direct Action Everywhere. And as a lot of other people mentioned, we've got a ton of people on the call. I think that I'll be one of the last few commenters. We won't hear from everyone to save you the time, but I just want everybody to know how many people care about this issue. And I think that you all have heard, um, all of the issues or all the problems with animal agriculture. And when there's so many issues, um, with this entire food system, it's hard to know where to start and how to address it, and what a relatively small city like Albany can do. And I think that's where this resolution comes in. You know, it's going to be hard to transform this entire food system, but one thing that we definitely can do is stop making the problem worse and stop allowing these facilities to get bigger. Stop allowing them to expand, and it is happening. There are millions of government, of dollars of government funding going to allow these facilities to get bigger, to kill more animals, and to destroy even more of our planet. And Albany as a city can speak up and say that you don't support this because we are affected here in the Bay Area by what happens in factory farms all around the state. And San Francisco has done this. We are approaching other cities as well, and if Albany gets on board, I think even more cities will come on board. And the state will have the pressure that they need from people that they respect, like other politicians, to, um, take action and pass this as a bill, or for the governor to pass it as an executive order. I think it is important, but at the same time, it's also symbolic. So I don't know what the procedural rules are, but, um, as I think the city manager said, it isn't directly changing what Albany is doing, other than making this proclamation. So I do hope that, um, it can be voted on tonight and passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, hi, my name is Jorge Luis Maya, and I want to express my support for this resolution. I think that it will be really good for workers, consumers, the planet, and the animals. The workers, because they are mostly vulnerable immigrants like myself that are exploited and taken advantage of. The consumers, because they are misled with false advertising. The planet, because farming animals is the second contributor to the crime, to the, uh, climate crisis. Um, to the animals, because they are tortured, abused, and exploited for profit. So I think that rejecting factory farms is one of the most effective things that Albany could do to protect everyone in the planet. So that's why I really support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and councilmembers. Nick Pilch, Albany resident. A brief note, just to say I support this resolution for all the reasons stated in the agenda item and as expressed by the previous speakers. I don't think any more bureaucratic process is needed here. Councilmembers should just vote your conscience and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any more speakers, bringing it back to council. Uh, I will start again with a Baicopa, the fault is entirely mine. Um, and I apologize for that, uh, for not sending it by staff. Uh, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Um, yeah, uh, first, thanks to all the people who commented, very much appreciated. Um, and, uh, thank you to Councilmember Gary for bringing this. Uh, I have to agree with, uh, some of what we've said previously. Um, you know, as we should generally strive to go with our policies and have the, have things we bring uh, reviewed, I think, for things like this that are essentially taking positions, um, and supporting them at a larger level. Uh, those are more decisions that are policy level at the council. Um, we are, we are taking a political stance, a political and value stance here, um, not a, you know, as, uh, functional one about our core services of changing them as we do with other, uh, stuff. So I think while we should strive to have staff review things, if we pass this tonight, I don't think that will be a great loss, and we can just be more careful in the future. And I think we, we should pass this. It's, it's pretty obvious, um, why, uh, I think we all, um, know the dangers and, uh, bad effects of factory farms. Um, and if, I think, heard a lot about, um, the meatpacking industry, especially during the pandemic, and how poor the working conditions are, and how this is all connected as part of these societal ills that we want to counter. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Nathan, your frame lit up. I don't know if that meant you wanted to speak.
Well, I, um, uh, I'm, I'm not enthusiastic about doing this, uh, without, uh, uh, in the, without addressing our responsibilities uh, with respect to animal cruelty, uh, within the city of Albany. Um, we had one member of the public state that, uh, Golden Gate Fields would be considered a factory farm under the definition here, and I think I'd like to make sure that that is, I, I doubt that that is correct with respect to the Farm Systems Reform Act. And as I understand it, I ha- I. And as I understand it, I don't, haven't seen any reference to any state legislation. So I'm assuming we're at the stage here of direct, direct action everywhere, looking for a, a sponsor for state legislation. So it may or may not affect Golden Gate Fields. And I think it would be wise for us to clarify that before we pass this. I think also the, looking at the language of the resolution, the I'm very comfortable with endorsing the Farm Systems Reform Act. I have no problem with that whatsoever. I'm, my concern, I, I think that we do need to clarify whether we are asking the state of California to put a moratorium on Golden Gate Fields as well as on meat production facilities. And I'm concerned about the statements, the very broad statements about about the factory farms being a leading, leading cause of environmental destruction and so forth. I think that to make those kinds of statements, we probably should have it, have, at least give others and a heads up and an opportunity to explain to us, you know, what why they would disagree with those statements. So I, I don't think that those very broad statements are actually needed for this resolution. If we could narrow it to support for the Farm Systems Reform Act and leave state legislation to clarification about the meaning of what is and is not a factory farm, I would be much more comfortable.
Thank you, Councilmember Nathan. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but thank you for making this spot.
I'm sorry to, if this seems like I'm, you know, this is just a simple political thing. We don't like factory farms. Let's just pass it. I, I, you know, I understand that and I share those sympathies up to a point, but I also think it's very serious when a city has such a cruel operation going on within its borders and is such an important source of funding. I think that we, you know, we're, we're really opening a door here that we need to understand what we're doing when we step through it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman McQuaid?
Thank you. You know, I, I certainly understand that the issue here, and I spent quite a bit of time this morning, kind of going through it, learning more about it. I'm not sure that at this point, the resolution is going to be terribly effective. It's sort of scattershot and almost going into a vacuum. So if we're going to do this, excuse me, I would like to see us work directly with our Senator Skinner and Assemblymember Wicks to see what they might be interested in carrying some legislation forward. And there, you know, there may be legislation out there I'm not aware of, and that might be something to do some research on. Again, you know, I would certainly support, supporting Senator Booker's bill. But I would also encourage us to get Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla on board there and have, have some conversations with them about being co-sponsors. I'm not sure what happened with Ro Khanna's bill. I realized that he had, he had a bill, like a companion piece. I never saw that it got even a bill number, so I'm not sure what happened with that. But again, to work with Barbara Lee's office and see if she would co-sponsor such a, such a bill. I think working with our Bay Area Air Quality Management District might have some might be another good source to kind of start pulling some of these things together to see what, what we can do. That's real concrete and will lead to real action. And I'd certainly want any kind of conversation to include job training for displaced workers. Any unintended, unintended consequences to any actions that we take. So I'm wondering if we could have like a council subcommittee to come, to work on this and to think about if we could send letters instead of just a resolution, but just sending letters to people, getting people in the legislature more involved. If that could be a subcommittee of the council. So that's, that's what I'm thinking right now. That might be more effective.
Councilmember Nathan?
There's a suggestion. It sounds like we would very likely have a unanimous vote to support the Farm Systems Reform Act. And that is, that's the, the general term for the various bills that have been introduced by Senator Booker and Representative Khanna. And Barbara Lee has, I believe, from, I did a little research too, and it looked to me like Barbara Lee has did co-sponsor a Ro Khanna bill. So there doesn't seem to be any disagreement amongst us about supporting that bill. The issue of what a California bill would look like, I think we probably want to see a little bit more about that before endorsing the effort. If we are, and we certainly, I think, need to know. We've had testimony that, or, you know, public comment rather, that, that this, that the, the legislation would cover Golden Gate Fields. I'd like it to, but I'm not sure that everybody on council would like it to. And I think that we need to know one way or another before we declare support. So my suggestion as a compromise would be that we declare support for the Farm Systems Reform Act. But defer action on the rest of this to a future date when we either have legislation or a clear proposal that tells us whether or not Golden Gate Fields is included in, in the scope of the, of the proposal.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes, I wanted to add in that I looked it up on EPA's website. And I believe by the official definition they have there, Golden Gate Fields would count as a a concentrated animal feeding operation is a place where animals will be stabled and confined for a minimum of forty-five days or more in a twelve-month period and where crops, vegetation are not sustained in normal growing period. So where normal farm operations like grazing don't happen, but animals are being put. And I found another article showing that horse racing tracks are indeed regulated as such by the EPA. Though I would also point out that the suggestion for the, the state is a moratorium on the expansion and construction of such facilities. So while Golden Gate Fields would be under that purview, it would not be, you know, its operations would not be affected because I'm assuming that they're not planning on expanding. I would be frankly shocked by that. Given all of this, I also wanted to add that, you know, I think if we want to continue this more seriously by lobbying our legislators, there's nothing stopping us doing that after we pass this, if we wanted to. And indeed, if, if people in this council are interested in doing so, I think that would be a great idea. But this can be the, the start of that process and isn't, you know, necessarily us putting a period on it and saying, we're done.
Would you be comfortable with my proposal that we pass our support for the Farm Systems Reform Act tonight? But defer consideration of state legislation until we understand. So we at least know what we're doing with respect to our ask regarding Golden Gate Fields.
That's, that's the, will the rest of the council be comfortable? But I'd also be comfortable passing this tonight.
Councilwoman McQuaid?
I'd be comfortable with Councilmember Nathan's suggestion.
I have a question. I opened the materials on this item beyond the resolution. Hoping to learn what the Farm Systems Reform Act was and didn't find it in there. If somebody could very briefly apprise me since this resolution refers to it, but I didn't see any explanation of it in our materials. And I didn't have the time to, to go look it up and educate myself.
It, Representative Ro Khanna introduced in June twenty twenty, HR sixty-seven eighteen, the Farm System Reform Act of twenty twenty. And there is counterpart legislation in the Senate introduced by Cory Booker. I don't have the number for that.
That's fine. I'm more curious what it, what it does, what it proposes to do.
Okay, I can share my screen. I can show you.
General description. Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, if you can just show me some bullet points. I'm sure it's a many-headed, many-headed.
That is exactly what Cory Booker has on his website.
Yay.
So this will include a moratorium and I think generally aims to increase competition so that farming is not concentrated with, you know, a couple of large actors.
And so is the, because this is something I noticed in the resolution as it refers to, you know, the resolves refer to animal feed operations. This provides, refers to confined animal feed operations. Those might have different, different definitions. The definition you read, I mean, that couldn't not apply to feeding your cat? I mean, your cat is not living sustainably on the environment, so I don't really understand.
No, because I think there's a certain number of animals that would have to be involved. Okay, I, I'm not an expert on these matters.
Okay, well, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, just because of the lack of information, I'm, I'm not opposed to supporting it if I have information, but I don't have a definition of what an animal feed operation is. So I don't know what it is that I'm really being asked to, to support. The Farm Systems Reform Act seems good to support. And so, no, the spirit of the council on that, but I, I at this point, not knowing what an animal feed operation is specifically in definition, if it's defined in statute somewhere. I can't, I can't support that at this point, you know, you can come back with that information.
I'm suggesting supporting the federal legislation really on trust, our trust in Congresswoman Lee, that she is skilled and experienced and has great values. And if she's supporting this, I'm, I, I can, I'm comfortable with that part of the resolution. I'm just not comfortable flying blind on endorsing state legislation that has not yet been formulated, that may or may not apply to Golden Gate Fields. I think that that, that's something that affects Albany very directly. And while I'd be delighted if it did affect Golden Gate Fields, I, I think that the council needs to know exactly what it's doing before it does something in that direction. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, Councilwoman McQuaid?
Would it make sense to, rather than have a, a resolution that we're really, I think, sort of cannibalize? Almost to start over with a letter to supporting the Farm System Reform Act and, and Ro Khanna's bill? Would that, would that just make more sense just to send a letter to?
That's like a good solution. That, that makes it much simpler and we can direct that such a letter be prepared without trying to wordsmith a resolution as we sit here tonight.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. And would, would councilmembers write the letter? I guess it's letters.
I, yeah. Maybe in part to make up for my procedural faux pas, I would certainly volunteer to help write the letter.
Thank you.
If we go that way.
Well, I'll make a motion that the council, I don't know that an actual motion is necessary or whether this is a consensus item, but that the council appoint Mayor Jordan and Councilmember Gary as a subcommittee to prepare a letter to members of our congressional delegation expressing support for the Farm Systems Reform Act. And that we defer action on, well, I'll just leave it at that, that that would be the outcome of our deliberations tonight.
Well, I'll second that.
So motion and a second to establish, going to make the friendly amendment of an ad hoc committee. I'm trying to mindpiece and queue attorney, ad hoc committee consisting of Councilmember Gary and myself to write a letter of support for the Farm Systems Reform Act that would then be sent slash shared with our congressional delegation.
So can we just write the letters without the formulation of the committee? I mean, we can present them to the council or bring them to the city since that's policy so she can review.
Well, I think, I think what's on the table in this case is that the council will be authorizing essentially the ad hoc committee to write the letter and send it without having to bring it back to the council. So that actually gets faster. You know, I don't know if time is of the essence. Given the congressional legislative cycle, but we can move more quickly given the, what's laid out with the motion. Yes, Councilwoman McQuaid?
I mean, it's, looking at the congress.gov website, it appears that Senator Booker's bill has been in committee since July of twenty twenty-one. So I'm not sure that we need to break any speed records here, but I think we need to move forward with it. I don't want to put it off indefinitely, but.
And I, I have no special investment in having a formal ad hoc committee, but I would like to be sure that I, I would like to see the letter. I, I think it should come on the next consent calendar if that's possible.
Would you be to work with Mayor Jordan, Councilmember Nathan?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I just want to be sure that both of you are comfortable with it when it comes back so that we've got something that, you know, we can all, we can all support.
I, I apologize. I'm, I'm confused now. So the, the motion was to establish an ad hoc committee of two particular members. Is there a change in that, which is fine?
There's a request from Councilmember Gary that to remove the ad hoc committee. So I, I think what I would perhaps change this, not to have a, a formal motion, but to ask for a consensus of the council that it give direction to those two members of the council to bring back a letter for our consideration on the next consent calendar, supporting the Farm Systems Reform Act.
Councilmember Gary, are you, are you willing to work on this?
I brought it, so absolutely.
Good, okay.
I made that, I assumed that, so.
I did too, but it's always nice to ask.
Is that direction, is everybody, I, I don't think we even, we need a formal vote, just, yeah, okay. I think we're good.
I am interested in the other part, so I will go back and do what I should have done, which is to refer it to, to staff for first look. And then bring it back, which will help to answer those questions of is, is Golden Gate Fields inbound or outbound, given whatever statutory definition exists for an animal feed operation or a confined animal feed operation?
So that would go to the city attorney? Okay.
Yes, is that meet with general agreement? I'm not seeing yes or no. Nods, yes, thumbs up, thumbs down?
It just seems a little too amorphous to me right now. I suggest we get this letter done and then come back to whatever is the next step, but if you feel strongly about it.
Well, I can go back and do what I should have done anyway. With apologies to Councilmember Gary for not having, having done that. Does really require council direction to do that under the policy that we have. I, I will proceed on that basis to backfill that gap on my part. I think with that, we're done with deliberation on this item. I appreciate your forbearance and thank you to those who, who commented and spoke. That will move on to the next item under new business, which is city council appointments to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners.
Good evening, council. The item before you tonight is the appointment of alternates to the Boards of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners. These alternates per Charter Section nine point oh. These alternates per Charter Section nine point oh one may serve for a period of up, up to one year unless again appointed. So this is kind of like an annual item. At your last December meeting, the council reached a consensus to have Councilmember McQuaid continue as the mayor's alternate. Staff, staff's recommendation, recommendation tonight is if council chooses to select the council member. To serve as Mayor Jordan's alternate, if you would like it to be different than what you've. Decided in the December meeting and also reappoint the other alternates as recommended. So I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not seeing any questions. Is there a member in attendance, somebody in attendance who'd like to comment? Not seeing any hands raised. Back to council. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there a motion? Yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
Just clarifying, so we appointed in December Councilmember McQuaid to be the alternate?
Um, it was during your regional body appointment, it was, it was stated on the matrix showing as who was. And I think you, you all kind of just agreed to keep the matrix as is, so.
Great. So my next question is going to be to Councilmember McQuaid, if they would like to continue. If you do not, then I was going to suggest that seeing as the appointees, the mayor. And by the rotation, it'll be on me next. If you do not want to, I will happily do so on your stead. But up to you.
Awesome power. Um, I actually, yes, I would like to continue. Thank you though for asking.
Very good. So is there a motion?
Then I will motion that we appoint Councilmember McQuaid as the alternate and reaffirm all other alternates for the year. As listed in the staff report.
Just to clarification, is that reaffirming other alternates or?
Reappointing, I believe it's, it's said as reappointing all other alternates in the staff report.
There, there was one alternate that was changed from the previous year. There is a police pensioners that indicated that his health is not all that great. And, and he's not really technically, tech, techno, technologically savvy. On meeting on Zoom. So we had replaced that with an active police officer.
So maybe a man to appoint.
Yes, I will restate, move that we appoint Councilmember McQuaid as the alternate. And appoint the alternates as proposed in the staff report.
So Mayor Jordan, did you, to catch you off, did you ask if anyone else was interested? Did I just miss that? Or we just?
Did I ask if anyone else was interested in the position? I have, I have not asked. Is anybody else interested in the position? I am not seeing that anybody else is interested in the position. No. You're muted, I think.
Sorry, I did say yes.
You did say yes. Okay, thank you. So we, we have a motion, but no second. We have a second council member who's expressed interest. So when the motion will die without a second, in which case, okay, we have a motion and a, a second. The motion being to appoint Councilmember McQuaid and to appoint the other. Nominees that have been put forward is listed in the staff report. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you poll the council?
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
You are muted, Councilmember Nathan?
Sorry about that, I'm on my phone now. Uh, uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Gary?
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You say, thank you, City Clerk for bringing that up. It was fair to say, a little bit of, a little bit of cleanup. I think we got tired before when we were doing the regional appointments. Before we fully formalize this. So we'll move on to item twelve, which is reports regarding city council appointed. Representation to various bodies. Are there any reports this evening? Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes, I've got reports from a regular board directors meeting for E B C and our marketing regulatory and legislative subcommittee meeting. So at the regular meeting, the main objects of discussion, we passed a pilot program. For low income electrification with the idea of decreasing the cost, don't block power. And got a budget update which showed that E B C has higher than expected sales, just due to rate changes. And P C I A costs, which P C A is a transfer fee for moving between utility companies. And then I wanted to highlight that at the Marketing Regulatory and Legislative Committee. We got an update on a bunch of things, but the one I wanted to share was a chart I thought would be interesting. Showing Albany's opt out, out percentage and up down percentage. After we changed our default rate a couple of months ago, to remind anyone, our last default rate. Stopped existing, so we changed like a couple of other cities did, and this is comparing all those other cities. As you can see, we're the blue line. We have, we have pretty much the lowest opt out percentage comparatively. And the, about the highest opt down percentage, which the opt down, as our staff phrased it, it's actually kind of a good thing. Is it shows that people are not opting out, but they're involved in choosing the right energy plan for them. So I think that was positive news and shows that Albany people are, you know, engaged and looking at their energy mix. So all good news.
I actually have a, a question on that. Thank you for the report. The. Is that opt down of those, those actually accounts that started out on Rule one hundred and then opted down to, to Bright Choice? Or are those accounts that were on care? And so what kind of automatically went to Bright Choice?
I believe those were accounts that were changed with the new default and then chose to, you know, opt down from there.
Okay, thanks. I'm fascinated there was even that many, that many. But I, I think that goes to the effectiveness of the city's marketing that this change was coming, which is a good thing. Do any other members have reports on meetings attended? Councilmember McQuaid?
Thank you. I did attend the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities where there is an interesting discussion about redistricting. Statewide and how that all has sort of, I think, been completed now. Just to throw in some other stuff, the chamber had another good mixer. We have a new business in town, the I B X Fitness down on San Pablo. They did a nice ribbon cutting week or so ago, and then everyone home had a community meeting. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other council members with a report on meetings attended? Councilmember Nathan?
Yeah, I attended the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting at the end of January. And there was nothing. Exactly specific to Albany, but there was, I guess, the, the two issues. That are coming back and forth to the commission that are of special interest for the city. Would be the, the continuing issues with the construction and right of way for the I eighty Gilman interchange. That project, of course, is massive and has, will have a lot of impact. Negatively for Albany in the short term and hopefully very positively for us all in the long term. And it is running into a pretty predictable cost and, and timing issues. Given the pandemic situation. The other piece is the, the other issue that has some specific relevance for Albany. Is San Pablo Avenue and the, the, the multimodal corridor project. Which is, is moving forward. I think that the, the, the major change. An ex, an expansion of the project into Berkeley, if people recall. Because of the configuration of San Pablo Avenue and its side streets, the commission was. Pursuing an off San Pablo alternative for both Albany and Berkeley. But Berkeley is now seeking to have its stretch of San Pablo Avenue. Include on San Pablo, on San Pablo configuration. Albany is still pursuing an off San Pablo Avenue configuration. But, but the change will probably, I would, I would say is likely to accelerate the time. When Albany will be looking at an on San Pablo Avenue configuration as well. There's lots of other interesting projects, but those are the, the Gilman and San Pablo Avenue are the two. With the most direct impact on, on Albany.
Thank you, and I will just add that based on Councilmember Nathan's report that the Gilman interchange project was going over budget last time. And her direction to where, find information on that, I did go look at that. The majority of the, the over budget is actually due to P G N E. So it essentially quadrupled its cost for undergrounding. And I guess it wasn't under a specific contract, so it went from like one point five million to six million dollars. Which is, well, make what you will of that with P G N E involved. That is the only source, but that was by, by and far the largest source. So that's pretty unfortunate. Looks like A C T C is looking at how to contain such costs in future projects.
Yeah, and there's a lot of outrage about it in this project. And the sense that P G N E is looking for funding wherever it can find it. To deal with the, the judgments against it. That's not the only piece, but that is, that is the, the lion's share.
Yeah, thanks. Councilmember Gary, I don't know if you had a particular report this evening or not. Oh, okay. The Stop Waste Energy Council Base Management Authority Board met. And the main item was discussing the sixteen hundred acres that Stop Waste owns in Altamont Pass. It's doing some interesting experiments there with compost spreading and all sorts of researchers are involved with that. Send under the, the moniker carbon farming. So it's using its, its land for. Looking at this one of many methods for reducing greenhouse pollution. I also attended a meeting of the ad hoc committee of the Alameda County mosquito payment district. That is negotiating the raises for staff going forward, a new memorandum of understanding. And I see that we have an attendee who has their hand raised. I apologize if I noticed that late. City Clerk, if you could please admit the attendee.
Oh, excellent timing, Mayor. I was just wondering, I noticed this is all just meetings. And possibly your, your subcommittee reports are on a, a different agenda item. I just wasn't sure how this was titled with, it was meetings you attended, like the Alta Bates, you know, hospital. Or, you know, the Alameda County Library, you know, representative, your reports. Maybe in the beginning of this whole entire meeting was your subcommittee reports. I was just trying to figure out when your subcommittee reports were. And how to, how someone should, you know, report a proper subcommittee report.
Thank you, that is, that is a great question. I appreciate your bringing it up. I believe the council has one ad hoc committee designated at the moment. And so I will seek to do better and include that in this section in the future. I am one of the members of that committee, so given your reminder, I will, I will say that we did meet once. With city staff and with the contractor to the city. This is regards a potential revenue measure to support advanced life support services. And we just had some initial conversations about different ways that such tax might be structured. And staff and the consultant are working it up. So that's, that's basically what happened at that meeting. Yes, Vice Mayor Tiedemann.
I just wanted to make a super brief note on housekeeping here. I think the chart we have up for this item is out of date. So we should make sure it's updated with all of our most recent shakeups to our appointments.
Thank you. Is there something specific?
No, I think it's just before we did our reorganization.
Yes, I, I apologize for that. I think the template didn't somehow took on the old template. So I'll make sure that the template is changed.
No worries, thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tiedemann. All right, well, with that, and the many glitches I've introduced, we have reached future end items. I don't know if there are requests for future items at this time. Councilmember Nathan?
Yeah, I have become very concerned about what is happening. With the Social and Economic Justice Commission. We've had. You know, we have all seen accusations against staff members. That are, are, you know, have not. Have not been substantiated, but have apparently seemed to have resulted in. Change after change of staff support. And now Anne Shu, who has a lot of other things to do, is, is staffing that committee. I'd like us to, to look into what is happening. And I was really troubled both by written and oral communications. About the, the motels where that Berkeley Food and Housing Project is using. For emergency housing for people experiencing homelessness in Albany. Who need some emergency help. And the language that has been used around those motels. About prostitutes and cockroaches, which seemed really dehumanizing and misogynistic to me. And also the word ghetto being used to describe those motels. These, this kind of language, it seems to me, is not really appropriate for in, in any commission. And particularly not in a social and economic justice context. And I will be asking the council to consider asking the commission. To address this and try to make sure that we don't have either. In a, we don't have inappropriate conduct either towards the staff. Nor in language about groups of people. It, it's just seems to be getting a problem that seems to be getting worse, and I think that we should intervene. So I plan to send that back at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? I see that there is an attendee who has their hand raised. Should be a time for questions and comments on future agenda items.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I, I agree with Councilmember Nathan. You know, I apologize if the truth hurts, but I would like to bring up a future agenda item with Albany. Let's see here. You know, how do I switch this, this mood right now? I'm trying to suggest a. I'm trying to suggest a positive thing for the good of the city, which is regarding a future agenda item. And that is school zones. And I think it's something that's been overlooked by the city for far too long, over ten years. And I just want to remind the city council that maybe you could recommend or I don't think you recommend your advisory bodies, but maybe city staff could look into the pros and cons of incorporating school zones in our municipal codebook and the the grants, possible grants and money that we would, and the revenues we would create by adding that to our municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you. And not seeing any other hands raised. I believe we have reached the, yes, Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we get an update on the Hill? I know where the weather changes, it's gonna be hot, and I think we should just see where we're at today with the with the research that was conducted, that would be great, just a brief update, especially for the residents and peers. Definitely want to make sure that we reach out to, I guess, address the concerns that Ms. Lynn had presented in her comments. I don't know if that's more of a an issue that can be handled also if we have to formally and put something in place, but another issue I think that would be relevant to, I know January, I'm sorry, December of last year about a memo about pedestrians and vehicular accidents, and I know Councilmember Nathan suggested that we bring that back, so I I don't want to miss on that opportunity to address the safety components of that. As you stated in in the comment that, you know, one fatality is too many. So, you know, I know the big concern was that signs don't slow down people, but again, the proper lighting and beacon lines on sign could result into saving lives. So I don't want to submit the opportunity to bring that back and address those issues for the people of our great city. Thank you so much.
Amen.
Thank you. Any other future items? Not seeing any, I believe that brings us to the adjournment of this meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Gary, Councilmember McQuaid, Councilwoman Nathan, Vice Mayor Tiedemann, City Clerk, KALB, as always, stalwart city manager and attendees who have stayed with us through the entire meeting. Thank you very much. Have an enjoyable rest of the night.